Good afternoon and welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting, September 19th, 2024. We will start with introductions on the dais.
Lucy Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Holly Christman, Assistant County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. So, welcome everyone. We start every meeting with prayer, silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Okay, we have some presentation proclamations. And the first one that we're going to do is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Month with the goal of addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today, which is fundamental to the future of Hamilton County.
And whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated approach to suicide prevention education, best practice post-vention, and a mental health services system of care for children, teens, and adults and families across the lifespan places a critical responsibility on our community, and whereas this month will be celebrated worldwide to raise awareness of programs addressing the mental health needs of all ages and to promote understanding of the warning signs and the risk factors that can help people intervene and guide those suffering towards vital resources such as mental health services and supports that facilitate recovery and resilience while showing that hope exists within our community.
And whereas the Hamilton County Suicide Prevention Coalition is made up of various organizations and volunteers working in mental health, addiction, youth services, older adult services, loss and attempt survivors, the faith community, safety service providers, 988 and 281 care line operators, and many other partners seeking to make the Hamilton County community a safe space to reach out for support and resources to regain a sense of hope and purpose. And this coalition effort is funded by the Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. Now therefore be proclaimed, the Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf of its residents and the entire community hereby extend their deepest gratitude and appreciation to the Hamilton County Mental Health Recovery Services Board for their unwavering dedication to raising awareness surrounding mental health and assisting in ending the stigma of mental health in Hamilton County.
Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in all of Hamilton County. Okay, we're gonna stay here. And before you give your comments, I'm gonna open it up for the Board if they have something to add. Vice President Dreehouse?
First of all, thank you all for being here. For those that can't see, there's quite a contingent in the room helping us raise awareness about the challenges related to suicide in this community and the need for services for those that are struggling with mental health issues. So, it's a very serious topic. We appreciate you bringing it to the Board. So, thank you for everything that you do on a daily basis to address the needs of those that are really struggling with mental health issues in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Dumas.
Thank you. I see our rep is here for the Mental Health Recovery Board and then Talbot House works very closely. We know that those numbers are going up. And so, whatever we can do to help fund and to reach more people, that's what we want to do. So, thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. It was mentioned that you have a large contingency here with you. If everyone would please stand. I see Pastor Reverend Donald Jones is in that place. So, thank you all. We want to give you all a big round of applause for all of your help. And this issue of suicide is diverse. Of course, we're seeing an increase with teens and lots of parents are, doesn't matter your income, parents are concerned about teens and all the pressures that they have. It's a very pressuring society with the social media and all things that they have to deal with. But then also, we've seen senior citizens suicide. Unfortunately, we've, it hit too close to home as we've had senior citizens committing suicide. So, we know that this is a very important issue and thank you for tackling it at a number of different directions. I know we put extra money for teen suicide and other mental health, obviously, but we definitely wanted to make sure we thank you for everything that you're doing. And now it's on you to say hello or whatever you want to say.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Jones. I'm actually an associate director at Talbot House, but I'm also part of the coalition. So, the coalition has over 60 members that range from individuals whose lives have been touched by suicide to other agencies and organizations that work with it. Mary Wolf, the coordinator, couldn't be here today. She's actually teaching a QPR class, which is a suicide prevention class today. And so, that was already scheduled. But we would love to thank you all for the recognition today because it is such an important topic and because we are all very passionate about like lowering these numbers in Hamilton County and being able to reach all of the people that have been touched already by suicide to be able to follow up and make sure they're getting the care that they need. So, thank you so much for the proclamation and for sharing this.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna ask something and possibly Bridget will probably drive you crazy, but can we get everyone to come up here with us? Because like you said, it is a coalition. It's not an individual. And we'll move our chairs to the side.
And then I'll take the last one. Thank you. Perfect.
Okay. Everyone on your way out in the hallway, we want to also recognize Ms. Sears who's here with the Mental Health Recovery Board. Thank you for being here as well. If you're gonna talk, you gotta go to the microphone.
Thank you for everything that you all do for us and for the community. And I think this is our third time down here this year to represent the mental health community, but this is a very, very important issue and we do need to bring more awareness to what's going on in our community as a release to our young people and suicide. And thank you so much for the recognition.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have another proclamation, presentation. Vice President Dreehouse?
Yes, this is a proclamation recognizing national diaper need awareness week. We've got a couple of representatives in the audience. I'll introduce you guys in a second. But before we get to the resolution, I do want to kick it around and just talk about the need for diapers in our community for those that are really struggling to make ends meet. The Diaper Bank is a wonderful resource. They and their partners make sure that those in need have access to diapers when they need them. And I've been down to the operation. It's, it's really something because they get these big, huge shipments of diapers in, they wrap them all, and they get them back out. So, it's quite the operation. So, they're here. We'll recognize them in a second. But I did want to say something before we get to the proclamation. And if either of you would like to say something too, and then we'll go ahead and read it.
Yes. Commissioner O'Dumas?
It's unnecessary, this proclamation. I can remember as a mom waiting, that financial impact of not having to buy diapers. They were so expensive back then and now even greater. So, I'm just glad that we're making people aware of the need.
Yeah, thank you. And I just echo what has been already said. There is a great need and I want to thank the Diaper Bank. And I also want to thank you for your partnership with the 513 Relief Bus. And we saw a lot of first time moms and people in need. And so, I got to see you in action getting those diapers to the mothers who needed, families that needed. So, thank you so much.
All right. So, we will read the proclamation. It's a proclamation recognizing national diaper need awareness week. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy can adversely affect the health and well-being of children and their families.
Whereas national surveys and research studies report that nearly one in two families struggles with diaper need and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend the availability supply. Whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive and parents to work.
And whereas many parents struggling with diapers need report missing an average of five days of work each month due to insufficient supply of diapers. Wow, that's something. Whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention resulted in medical costs, and parents may be prevented from assessing childcare needed to go to work or to go to school, thereby destabilizing the family's economic prospects and well-being.
And whereas the Hamilton County recognizes that diaper need is a public health issue and addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's families and communities and improved health for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential.
And whereas Hamilton County is proud to be home to trusted, community-based organizations, including Sweet Cheeks Diaper Bank, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels.
And whereas through their important work of addressing diaper need, diaper banks play a critical role in supporting families, improving infant health and well-being, and advancing our local and state economic growth.
Now therefore be proclaimed as that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners declares and proclaims September 23rd through September 29th, 2024, be known as National Diaper Need Awareness Week in all of Hamilton County. Awareness Week in all of Hamilton County. Thank you. And so Megan Milstead is here. She's the CEO and founder of Sweet Cheeks. I see she's brought a team member with her as well. The microphone is yours.
Thank you so much. This really means a lot. Diaper need has grown, up to one in two families experiencing it. We are growing as well, actively moving. Literally right now, we just unloaded a truck and then ran here to a larger space in Walnut Hills to hopefully better meet the need moving forward. Also adding on period supplies, which we've been doing for a while, and adult incontinence supplies. Lots of absorbent, basic hygiene items not covered by government assistance and necessary to succeed in daily life for all ages. So thank you very much. This means a lot to us.
Thank you. We're going to come and take a photo.
Okay. Yeah, next order of business. Those who are watching from home, you may see a new branding. That is our new brand. So just wanted to bring attention to that. But we do have some public comments. Larry Falcon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Larry Falcon. I'm a resident of the city of Cincinnati and an MSD ratepayer. I want to talk to you today about MSD and about the impervious surface fee. First, however, I want to thank you for the proclamation from Marilyn Wall. It was very much appreciated. And so thank you for doing that. I'm here today to make two requests of you. The first is very simple. I'd like you to tell the administration that you want a briefing on the impervious surface fee and on the work of the Impervious Surface Fee Advisory Group. We've been told for months now that that briefing to you is imminent, and it still is imminent, but it hasn't happened. Every month that goes by, ratepayers continue to pay, we're paying over $130 million a year for MSD to manage stormwater, none of which is related to our sewer discharges. And the property owners with the large roofs and the large parking lots that generate that stormwater are paying zero. So $10,000, $10 million a month, ratepayers are paying for these stormwater fees. And every month that goes by is under $10 million. So please some urgency to the impervious surface fee issue. The second thing that I'd like you to do is a little bit more complex. That is to tell MSD that you want an impervious surface fee and how it should be done and by when it should be done. This will take some work for a policy statement that's done right. Probably will take at least a month or two. Those of us engaged in the issue are happy to help you get it right. There's a whole advisory group full of stakeholders that would be happy to roll up their sleeves and work with you.
Thank you.
But this issue has been going on, I'll wrap up. It's been going on for eight years since the Rate Affordability Task Force recommended it in 2016. And so we'd really like the county commissioners to help put some impetus behind getting this issue taken care of.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Murphy?
Yeah, soon as you start, she'll hit the button. Okay, sorry. Hi, my name's Donna Murphy and I am the Executive Director of Heaven's Gain Ministries. We're located on Harrison Avenue, three driveways from Good Sam Western Ridge. Heaven's Gain Ministries' mission is to provide for the physical, emotional, and spiritual needs of families experiencing pregnancy loss before, during, and after the delivery of their precious baby. There has not been enough help for women who go through miscarriage. They're often told you'll just have some bleeding and cramping, but no one prepares them for that experience or prepares them for the DNC or prepares them for a delivery of a late miscarriage or stillbirth. And so our mission is to help those women. We have been helping over 2,000 women a year. And we'll help them so when they find out that there's no longer a heartbeat, we'll prepare them for what is that miscarriage going to look like at home? How can we help you through that? And can we give you support afterwards? All of our support services are provided by our advocates for parents of perinatal loss, and we do not charge a thing. It's all, it's all free for our clients. Then some people are told there's no heartbeat. They're going to go in and deliver a baby who's a late miscarriage, which can be up to 10 inches long or a stillbirth. We will prepare them because you're just told to go into the hospital and people don't tell you things, you know, like what's it going to be like in the hospital? And so we'll prepare them for that experience. And so I wanted you to know about that. Next month is Pregnancy Loss Awareness Month, and I wanted you to know that we are there and we're available, most importantly, to anybody who needs the help. Secondly, I wanted to talk to you about that a car, a stolen car went speeding down Harrison Avenue, flew into the air and hit our sign. And we don't have a sign any longer, but we are working on getting a used sign. And since we don't have a lot of funds, the, the cost of, of getting the permit is expensive. And I was just wondering if there, there's any way that they can take away that cost.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there?
Yeah, we're done. I mean, we're, your comments, but Holly, will, will you be able to?
I have your name, so I can follow up with you in terms of what jurisdiction you are and if there's any opportunity for waiving those fees. I don't know the answer at this point.
Okay, thank you. And please tell anybody that needs help, we're there for them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie Davis.
Hello, ladies. Again, I am coming to the board requesting that Board President Alicia Reese immediately remove Denise Treehouse from the Solid Waste Policy Committee due to her malfeasance while serving as Chair of the committee. This weekend, I attended the Skyline Acres Community Picnic, and we had 126 residents of Hamilton County sign a petition supporting the removal of Denise Treehouse from the committee. We have also filed an ethics violation against her. The newest news today is that we have discovered that under Denise's leadership on the committee, data is being scrubbed from the public view. For example, the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Board Agency does not make any reference anymore to the complaints, the over 300 complaints a year we get about landfill odors and the pollution and physical harm it's doing to residents. Ms. Treehouse has accepted over $7.5,000 in campaign contributions from Bill Rumpke, as well as their law firm that sued this county and sued us when we passed rules. And she accepted this money while she was negotiating the amendment of those rules and shepherding that her new personally written rules through the plan approval process. We are again asking for her removal. This is on top of the report I gave last week about the dumping of toxic waste in the backyards of Hamilton County residents and Colrain Township and Whitewater where East Palestine, a significant amount of all the toxic waste was dumped in our community. We gave no fees for that. We charged nothing extra. And Rumpke made hundreds of thousands of dollars by having that waste come into our community for us to have to deal with in perpetuity, as well as the toxic waste that was taken from Clamont County was hauled into Hamilton County. Again, Rumpke made hundreds of thousands, and Hamilton County made a lousy $2 per truckload. In addition to that, we discovered that Rumpke built a $100 million
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, your time is up.
We're asking and will continue our work.
Thank you. Okay, going to comments, presentations by the Commission. Vice President Dries.
Thank you. Couple of things. First on the list is to thank Bridget Darty and the team for the meet in the street that happened yesterday. This was a thank you luncheon for all county employees. Best attended ever. We've done this, I think, for three years now. Now, the weather was better this year. So that may have had something to do with it. But we had engaged all the vendors on Court Street, had food trucks as a way to say thank you to county employees that work every day for the citizens of this county. So very job well done. I know it was a team effort, but I know Bridget was leading the charge. And she introduced the branding strategically at this event to everybody that got a lanyard with the new logo on it. So it was very well received. People really enjoyed that. So I too wanted to recognize it's up on the screen and it's in front of all the document, in front of us with all the documents with the new brand. So we're embracing that and hope that people will embrace it as well. Beyond that, I attended a couple of things. The legislative reception thrown by Reddy. A number of us were in attendance there, trying to continue to have a relationship and a conversation with the business community and those that are doing economic development in Hamilton County. So I was happy to attend that. And also the Chamber of Commerce did their Chamber State of the Region report. I was unable to attend. My staff was there. But I've gone through the report and it is a wealth of information as we think about how to attract residents and businesses to Hamilton County. Talks about demographics and what we have in front of us right now and how to increase the economic activity in the region. So I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for doing this report. It was really well done, and I will continue to study the contents of that. And then lastly, I was going to say this last week, but I wasn't sure of it. I'm sure of it now, that we are in the top or the final three for the Sundance Film Festival. So we've talked about this before, and what a big deal it would be for Hamilton County or Cincinnati to get the film festival here. So we had a run-through, we had a site visit a couple of months ago, and we've landed in the top three. So super pumped about that and look forward to the good news here in a month or two to see if we became the finalist. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Just a few things. I participated in the White House webinar, as I do every week, and also participated in the virtual recap on the One Ohio Board of Directors meeting. Participated in the Human Services Committee through CCAO. And we're talking about a lot of things about youth and creating our platform to present to the legislature. I visited the Forest Park. New Library is absolutely fabulous. They deserved it. They needed it. And there were, I went to the sneak preview right before the grand opening, and I can't wait to go back. Participated also in employee appreciation event in the streets. And then the level of gratitude that I felt from the staff, they really appreciated that we took the time to do this. And as was said earlier, we've done it before, but just, it was just great positive activities going on, so many vendors. And so I truly enjoyed it. And then I would just like to say in general, I saw on the news, Mike Brown spoke out about his opinion about what we had spoke about, about the lease agreement, the renovations. And it was just a joy to hear him speak. We all have mouthpieces a lot of times, but I'm not saying that I agree with everything that he said, but it was a welcome change to see the owner come out. It showed, you know, that we're, I think he knows that we mean business, and he does too, but it was great to see him. And I hope we see him again speaking out. And last but not least, we have a gentleman here. Mr. Sheldon Cooper is here. Every once a month, I bring forward, or Alice brings forward, groups that have been inspired by the Inspire Program. And today we have Mr. Cooper here. And if you'd like to say something, Alice?
Well, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Cooper actually goes by Mo. He has a program that's actually pretty fantastic. It's an after-school program. Their organization's name is Positive Motivated Messengers Empowering Group. So I will let you go ahead. And he actually brought gifts for everyone.
Okay.
All right, good afternoon.
Welcome.
I want to thank all of you guys. It's a blessing, you know, to have received that grant from you guys. Because I didn't know how we was going to proceed with the after-school program. And then when I got the notification, you know, weight was lifted off of my shoulders. Positive Motivated Messengers Empowering Group, PME for short, you know, we run after-school programs and summer programs. We focus on arts education, mental health services. From the arts education standpoint, we bring in instructors to teach our students art, you know, music, dance, you know, and acting as well. From a mental health standpoint, we have facilitators come in, you know, help the kids with life skills as well as character building. Like I said, it's just been a blessing, you know, and I appreciate you guys so much. A school that I've been able to run the program in for the past three years. It's called Dampy Community School. They're under CCSC, which stands for Cincinnati Charter School Collaborative. So they're a K through H school, and we're hoping this year to continue with it. And like I said, I thank you guys so much. I didn't know what we was going to do without that grant this past year. Thank you.
Great. And I noticed how that name rolls off your tongue. Alice was trying to do it and you just did. So thank you so much.
Yeah, open up, Vice President Dries. Well, thanks for what you do. We just had the Suicide Prevention Proclamation earlier today. So
Yes, I would like to.
There's a clear nexus here, right, with the work that you're doing and making sure that our youth are healthy and well-educated and have opportunities for positive things. So thanks for what you're doing.
Appreciate it. And the bracelet that I gave you guys, the Positive Bracelet, as you see on it, it's called PUMI. It's just P-U-M-I. That stands for Positive, Uplifting, Motivating, and Inspiring. So it's a brand that I created that we're looking to bring, you know, positive, uplifting, motivating, inspiring content to the world. You know, definitely have our youth in mind. We've been working on some music, you know, to bring out to the world. Because as we know, today, there's a lot of music out there that's not positive. So I think the world needs to hear it. And I definitely want to incorporate our youth, which I've done that with our students at Dampy Community School. So look forward to that and more programs and projects for, for the world.
Well, thank you very much. And just want to say, people have been asking like, what are people doing for the youth? So people can see there are a lot of people like yourself and others that are out there every day, mostly a lot of times putting their own money up, trying to get things done. So happy to hear that through this, you were able to help more young people in a positive way. So that's, that's awesome.
Appreciate you guys.
Are you also a coach? Do you coach sports?
Not recently. I have in the past.
You look familiar. Okay. All right. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, that's it. All right, great. Okay, a couple of things on, from me. I had a chance to go to the grand opening of Emerge Manufacturing, which is owned by the CEO Cynthia Booth, who has been a trailblazer businesswoman. and others that are out there every day, mostly a lot of times putting their own money up, trying to get things done. So happy to hear that through this, you were able to help more young people in a positive way. So that's, that's awesome.
Appreciate you guys.
Are you also a coach?
Not recently. I have in the past.
You look familiar. Okay. All right. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's it. All right, great. Okay, a couple of things on, from me, I had a chance to go to the grand opening of Emerge Manufacturing, which is owned by the CEO Cynthia Booth, who has been a trailblazer businesswoman in our community for many, many years. Very happy to see the project go in the Bon Hill community, right there on the corner of Seymour and Langdon Farm, which is a very important corner to me. My parents spent a lot of time there with their building. And I got a chance to meet Cynthia Booth. She was in banking then, when they were going and taking an empty warehouse and turning it into a entrepreneurship center that they had for over 28 years. I was a teenager and I got to see Cynthia Booth, worked with my mom and my father. And then I was always worried where all the history will go, because the Cincinnati Gardens was there. And I said, man, don't want to lose the history here. And it was so great to see Cynthia Booth come in and be able to partner with the Port Authority. And one of the things she said was interesting. She said, and I paid cash for my, for the property, and then was able to build. And I remember during COVID, we were looking for a minority business with the PPE supplies. We couldn't find any one in the country. And what she's doing there and the jobs that she's going to be creating, I just, and continue to create, because she has been creating jobs her whole career. So I was happy to be there and be asked to say a word about Cynthia Booth and opening Emerge Manufacturing. And that's huge. And that's a great also partnership, like I said, with Support Authority as well and many others. In addition to that, I was excited about the Employee Appreciation Day, because this was something new that our board, at the recommendation of the employees, and we were able to get it and get it funded. And I've gone every year and it's been great. It is great to see the employees be very happy about it, but it also was great to see people who are not county employees looking at our employees. And they're like, wow, you know, hey, I might, I might want to take a look at Hamilton County. And them talking so positively about the event. So again, shout out to Bridget and everybody that had a hand. And it was just, I mean, it ran like clockwork. And those are, so thank you to the team, everybody that helped put that together. So thanks for the photo. Appreciate that. And Scott, who drives our 513 relief bus, is now also, I call him DJ Scott. He's got a new name now, DJ Scott. We had, we had a really good time. In addition, I also, in addition to that, also got a chance to speak and welcome, for the second year in a row, the statewide My Brothers Keepers. These are young men, but now they have a girls' chapter. And this was started by President Obama. And then you had to have somebody in your state to sponsor and say they're gonna do it. And Senator Sherrod Brown took it on. And then you had to have local folks on the ground to say, hey, we will do these chapters. Lincoln Heights was one of the early chapters. So they came from all over. And it was great to see these young, young black men and women defying the myth that young people are all, you get it all over the news, young people are doing something bad, young people are doing something bad. And then when they do something good, we only give them two seconds. We say, we don't have a lot of time. We don't have a camera available to put it on the news. We can't, we don't have room in the newspaper. So we have to reverse it, that the ones who are doing it positive, we got to give them extra recognition, so that the people behind them say, we need to follow these young people. So it was so great to see them. And it's a partnership with the Cincinnati Reds. I want to give a big shout out to them. And I was with Phil Castellini and his team. And then they had a number of people, Barry Larkin was there, a number of people with a panel to, to speak to them. But when they got done, they started last year and they requested to come back this year, because that group graduated from high school. So we had a new group. And 200, 200 of them from all over the state toured the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame yesterday, Tuesday. And I hate I wasn't able to go, because we had a, we had something we were dealing with a little bit, called the Cincinnati Bengals presentation. But I want to thank Veda Stevens from my office, who went down and gave them the tour. And I want to thank Kent Butts from King Records Foundation, who also gave them the tour. But I got to see some of the video and they were just so excited. And it just was excited, I was excited to, to see it. Last year, they had a lot of great questions. And I'm sure they had a lot of great questions as well. I do want to highlight that the one-year birthday celebration, we have clickers now, and the numbers were 7,000 that came and was there. And now we're over 37,000 visitors. We're getting close to 40,000. And I think that's really good, considering we don't have marketing. We have to do it organically. So just wanted to highlight that. And then I also got a chance to welcome singer-songwriter, national artist, Glenn Jones. Many of you may know his song, "We've Only Just Begun." He's got a whole bunch more. But he is in town to write some additional music. And he wanted to see the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And he's writing some songs with our, one of our 2024 influencers, Mr. Big Rob, Mr. Southern Soul. And so they wanted, he wanted to get a tour and got a chance to do that today with him. And he was just so impressed. He came from the airport to Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And he knows, he knew Dr. Charles Foul really well. I was shocked. He said they were doing some music together with the late Reverend James Cleveland. And he also is a huge fan of The Spinners. So he was very Felipe Guin. He was just excited about that. So I just want to thank him for coming in. We have several artists when they come to town now. They want to see what we have here. So that was just outstanding. In addition, I wanted to, I did go by the 513 relief bus at the YWCA in Colrain Township today. And so we had Council on Aging, UC Health, Closing the Health Gap, and more. And so they're there until 3 o'clock today. In addition, I wanted to indicate one more time that the presentation, I want to thank, I want to thank the administration and my colleagues, because one of them, I think Tuesday was a major step, was a major step, because for me, the goal was to get the information out to the people in real time as it relates to the stadium. Because the complaints I heard, I keep hearing, was that people didn't find out about it until it's about to be voted on, or it was already voted on. And so I think it was a huge step to, because we're representing the taxpayers, so they should know what is going on. And so I think it was a, a big step to have the presentation shown to us and the people in real time. And certainly, they react. I want to reiterate, though, that this is not the final, no decisions being made anytime soon on that proposal. We got a chance to ask questions. It's on the website. You get to look at it, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions, because you can't have the pictures without financing. So we can't just say, oh, what do you want? We got to head of financing. And we understand those things need to, to happen before. So we're a long way. So it's a little different when people say, oh, what is it different? Why didn't you have a, someone asks, why didn't you have a press conference with everybody, you guys, the Bengals, all the people, because we're not there. We're doing it different now. We're not giving it to you. It's already done. What we're saying is get it out in the open and you can follow along every single step of the way. And I think that was huge, because on that issue of the, that's never ever been done before. So I just wanted to say that I, I think that was a big step. And it's different. We weren't trying to have a press conference of here it is, and this is it, and you got to, you know, it's over. We're saying at the very beginning, you're gonna walk with us, because we're representing you as well. So wanted to, to highlight. And with that, there will be back and forth and give and take, because that's what a negotiation is. But we all agree, not other side, but on our side, the taxpayers putting in 95% is too much. So we're, it's going to be some give and take. And I just want people to understand how that process works. But it's nothing being decided on today, tomorrow, or anytime very soon. I want to also join in congratulating Kristin and Films Cincinnati, with Sundance. It's not a small thing. That's a big thing. And to be in this finalist category, Kristin and I worked together many, many years ago. I was the interim director of the Ohio's first ever film office and had to write the rules for Ohio's first tax, film tax credits. Without tax credits and making this a, a film-friendly state, and the work that they're doing and bringing these films here, we would not have the, even the chance to apply. So I want to give her a big shout out, because once we pass those credits, she got to work, got to moving and grooving. And this is just a place where Hollywood and others want to come and film. So I just wanted to give her a big shout out as well and the best of luck. And certainly, we want to be as supportive as we can to be able to bring something like that to, to our city and county. Lastly, I just want to remind everyone that the 513 relief bus has a Healthy Aging Day. We take, we have our bus out all the time, but then there's some that, I said, let's have some themes around it. Let's have a couple of themes. And we've been doing that. And the next one is around senior citizens. So it's a Healthy Aging Day Party with a purpose. And they're going to have 70 providers that will be there to help senior citizens. And you don't have to worry about, is this a fraud? People call your house, it's a fraud. You will know that this is not a fraud. These are real people. This is real help. And it's going to take place at the Word of Deliverance Church. Bishop Hilton will be there. That's his church. And it is free for everybody to come. It starts at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And it's next Tuesday, September 24th. So get Grandma, Grandpa, get everybody out. Doesn't say, AARP people can come too. So AARP gives you real good news that you are a senior today. So, but it will be a lot of help, also medical services. I got to give a shout out to our bus. And, you know, we've been doing medical services with no copay, high blood pressure checks, diabetes checks. We even got a cancer check on the bus now. So we've been providing these services at no copay cost. And our partner is Council on Aging, and it's, it's a Healthy Aging Month. So excited about that. Please help get that word out, so that our seniors throughout the county can, can enjoy it. There is an election. Early voting begins October the 8th through November the 3rd. You must register to vote prior to that, if you want to register, and you need to register. But there is a voter ID law in Ohio that is new. It would be the first time utilized in a big race. And so people are encouraged to double-check your voter ID. 158,000 people have been purged. 17,000 are from here in Hamilton County. So even if you've been voting for 20, 30, 40 years, you should double-check to make sure that your ID, your driver's license from Ohio, or your state ID that you get at the BMV, or a passport, or a US military ID. That's all that they will accept this time. You cannot use your utility bills anymore, social security cards, or government documents. It has to be those other ones. And you have to make sure it matches your voter registration. So you can go on the Hamilton County Board of Elections website. We have a very good website, easy to navigate. Hit under voter registration and type your name in. Look at your license or your IDs that we just mentioned. And just make sure you double-check and everything is in order. If not, you can contact the Hamilton County Board of Elections. They'll be happy to help you and walk you through that process. So that's all that I have. And so I asked Holly, if you have any?
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Davis?
Well, as we talk about healthy aging, I just wanted to know if
You're so young. What do you mean?
If we could digress, we didn't, Mr. Cooper is still here. And I use, no wonder you said, is that it? We usually get a picture with the person who comes in.
Oh, yes.
If we're able to do that, I would appreciate
Absolutely. Holly, hold up. We're gonna come take photos.
Okay, that would be great. Thanks. Thank you for staying. Let's see, who's coming up?
We'll go down here. Okay, Holly?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to continue to be a broken record, I would too like to thank Bridget, Amanda, and the rest of the Employee Advisory Committee for the great event yesterday. It's not often that the entire county workforce gets together and interacts with each other. So it was really great to see everyone on the street yesterday with JFS, interacting with planning and development, and all the different departments together as one. So thank you to the board for allowing that event to happen. That's all I have. No by leaves.
Okay. Well, they gave me some names, Holly. I don't want to get in trouble, but it has Bridget Doherty, Communications, Melissa Henry from Children's Services. These were the liaisons, I guess. Najee Leary from Community Services at Team at JFS, Jim Tinker from JFS, Sarah Irwin from HR, Becky Striden from Planning and Development, Deb Myrie from Budget. They said, thank Budget for paying the bills. That's what they got on air. LaShawn Cook from HR, Teresa, Ms. Teresa, from our team for the administration, Amanda Carter, and Aaron Day. Of course, we had DJ Scott Wilson in the 513 relief bus. And they said, thank you to the EMA team. They did have a cool, that, oh man, we got some equipment.
Yeah.
You're never gonna get on one of them. You know, I had my, my mic off the whole time. Hope y'all heard those names. But anyway, thanks to EMA and their team. And then Cincinnati Animal Care was there. So we just had, and then, of course, all of the various departments. But this was kind of the organizing team. So did want to, hopefully, they can pick it up, but say their names. So thank you all again. It was, it was a wonderful thing. Okay, so we're gonna move to the calendar.
He's coming.
Mr. Engineer, here he comes.
Good afternoon. Just one item today. This is a report to the board on a letter that was received on September 12th from Duke Energy, requesting an easement on a parcel of property owned by the board located in the city of Cincinnati. The county engineer's office has reviewed their plat and find it acceptable. Should the board wish to enter into this easement, it should be recorded with the county recorder. And just to, I'm not sure if there was any negotiations involved between the county and the Duke Energy, but as far as the plat goes, it is fine for recording.
Okay, I'll open it up for any questions.
No questions?
No questions.
I do have a question.
Yes.
What are they gonna do there?
It's, they have a gas main there. There's apparently an existing gas main through the area that did not have an easement recorded with it. And they are going to be upgrading that or replacing that gas main. So they just want to make sure that the easement is recorded, properly recorded for the location that it's at.
Gotcha. I just want to, you know, like I said, be on the record, I'm all for safety. We gotta have safety. But when I hear that word upgrade, the ratepayers here upgraded in their request to go up on the gas and electric bill, which we don't really have anything to do with. But they said infrastructure was one of the reasons. But they said infrastructure was one of the reasons. And I'm telling you, this is not, they've done uh, they've gone up twice in a, in a, you know, years' time or it's just been so quick. And people are really suffering out here trying to hang on, as you well know. So the one thing I'd asked uh, uh Mr. Ludo was, because normally these are just, you know, no big deal. But for me, I just want to make sure, I'm, I want to look at it from two and three levels myself as well. Because when they say these upgrades, uh for me, I would have the next question of, okay, is this gonna make people's bills go up?
What's the overall impact?
Exactly.
Yeah, and that, that's why I wanted to bring up, we're not involved in negotiations or anything. We just looked at the plaque. So I just wanted to make sure the board knew that that's all we were looking at.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, I just wanted to put on the record in the future, um, we want to get, I would like to get a little more information. Was there negotiation? Did we ask? I would like one question added to the questions, whatever those are. Um, will there be a fee impact on the people? Um, you know, because you're, you have to do this or you're doing this. Uh, will there be a fee impact on, on the ratepayers? So maybe that's something in the future we can add to our, whatever due diligence questioning. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve item one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the consent agenda, Holly.
Yep, thank you. Um, so item two on the consent agenda is the auditor statement of financial transactions for the month of August. Item three is a resolution appointing Karen Clemens Lewis to the Cincinnati and Hamilton County Public Library Board. Um, item number four is a resolution authorizing the county auditor to assess a dollar forty-one cents upon certain parcels of property. This is for the Miami Conservancy District and it's for those properties that are within the Great Miami River watershed. Um, item number five is the resolution to approve the grant of easement that was just discussed. Um, item six are the bid awards and contracts authorized or executed by the Purchasing Department for the month of August totaling uh nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Item number seven is a resolution accepting one purchase order for the county engineer uh in the amount of just shy of a hundred and four thousand dollars. This is for a new Bobcat. Um, item eight is a resolution accepting a credit card late fee and/or sales tax uh for Hamilton County Administration and authorizing the release for Fifth Third Bank in the amount of twenty-nine dollars. Item nine is a resolution authorizing a grant agreement with the City of Sharonville. This is for a community revitalization grant. Uh, these are the, one of the recommendations that the board was presented back in June. Uh, this is for three hundred thousand dollars and it'll be used for the City of Sharonville to expand their small business facade improvement program. Item ten is a JFS item. That's a resolution authorizing a uh, the first renewal between the uh Hamilton County Economic Conclusion and Equity Department and JFS. This is for the Office of Family Voice, um, and extends it for one additional year. And this is the uh original MOU that set the expectations for the Office of Family Voice program. Item number eleven is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Strategies to End Homelessness for homelessness prevention services. This is funded through our Emergency Solutions Grant via um HUD. This is in the amount of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And uh last item is item number twelve, which is reporting no objection to two liquor permit applications. The first is RHW Investments and the second is M2 Stumps, Doing Business as Stumps Lane. And finally, item thirteen is the monthly investment report from the Treasurer for the month of August. That's the consent agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse. Commissioner Dimas?
Just a couple of comments. Um, item eight, which is um, I'll say maybe a little petty, but we have a million dollar, over a million dollar um budget, of course. And I'm wondering why are we always late on our credit cards? I mean, it's only twenty-nine dollars, every, every time we have a meeting, we're late. Why is that?
Um, Commissioner, I can answer that. We do, we have had a lot over the past couple of months. We are working with both the Purchasing Department and auditors to get those paid timely. And we're also working with all departments to ensure that when they get that credit card bill, anyone that used it turns in those invoices immediately in order to get that bill paid. Sometimes we are waiting for the people that use the credit card to get those invoices to us to verify payment. But we are working on that process and.
Okay.
Understand the frustration with that for sure.
Very good. Um, item number nine, just really happy about Sharonville and that, um, and that'll, somebody whoever, I don't know if you're going to speak today or whatever, the revitalization grant. And we, it's good that we're letting Sharonville know that we're not just concerned about downtown, but we are also concerned, uh concerned about you flourishing out in Sharonville. And lastly, um, item eleven, uh Strategies to End Homelessness. I know Kevin Finn agreed to come in if we needed to talk with him. But I'll just say the bottom line for me is we continue to give money to Strategies to End Homelessness. And I don't, I'm going to ask the board if we can look at maybe quarterly reports of where this money is going. Um, I'm, I'm not saying it's not going to homely, homelessness. I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago. I brought up about the two thousand nine hundred young people that are homeless at CPS. And so I didn't hear anything about what is the strategy for Strategies to End Homelessness? What is their strategy? Have they reached out to CPS? Uh, what are they doing to make sure that we uh remedy that issue? And I'm just really concerned be, because uh Strategies to End Homelessness has several partners. And I know, I'm hoping that he gets reports from them of uh how they're spending the money. But I want to know, at least quarterly, how the money is being spent. We keep putting more money in the bucket. And um, I'm sure they're doing lots of things, but I continue to see, to me, more and more homeless on the street. And so um, I'm also, as it relates to the young people, I don't see them in the cars like they, like they indicated for the twenty-nine hundred. But I'm just really concerned about a lack of reporting. Um, and not to say that they're not doing it, but I want to see the numbers. I like detail. And um, I'm going to uh say yes on this, um, because it's a different program, the Emergency Solutions Program from HUD. I'm going to say yes, but I would like for, for me anyway, to get a quarterly report on where this homeless money is going. So that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Holly, did you want to?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. And we'll be sure to work with Strategies if the board would like. We can also have Strategies come in for a presentation as well as Project Connect, which works with CPS students. I do know in talking with uh Mr. Finn, that Project Connect, which is in the Cincinnati Public Schools, um, when they call into the cap line, which is that one number to call if you're in need of homeless services, that Project Connect does get expedited access and priority. Um, so, but just as an example, but we can definitely, if the board would like, bring, bring that presentation in as well as more reporting back to the board on the use of our dollars.
And that would be fine with me. I just would like to see something in writing before Mr. Finn comes in. I did get the email about Project Connect, which is great. I didn't know that they were dealing with the young people. Would have been good to know ahead that someone was helping those young people. But I do know now. So I'd like to see something in writing, even if they do come in. Thanks.
Thank you. You had, um, I just want to just highlight on that part, you know, Strategies to End Homelessness. Are we ending anything? Are we getting close to the end or is the needle moving? I think that's where I'm coming from. Because it seemed like we're doing more money and.
You don't see.
I, I, you know. So if it's a strategy to end it, I need to see, are we trending downward or are we trending upward? Um, that's kind of been, I think, our question. But the last time we had a presentation, they went to blaming people saying they just panhandlers and they not, you know, they want to be homeless. So I just, I think having it on paper would, you know, where were we a year ago, two years ago? Are we going down? Are we going up? How much we've spent? Um, what has, maybe the need has changed in terms, we might have spent money over here, but now the homeless need is over here. So that would be good to, to see the, the numbers uh as well. You wanted to, Holly, to respond on, uh, Commissioner Dimas, did you want a response on? You had another question?
Yeah, if there were any questions on the Sharonville Grant, Kelly Adamson is here if there's any specific ones.
Do you have any questions?
No, I didn't have any.
You're okay with it?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Well, I'll make a motion to approve items, approve and accept for the record, items two through thirteen.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Just say that I'm, I'm also supportive of bringing in Strategies, so maybe we can get that calendar within the next couple of weeks or so. Okay, Kevin Finn in.
Yep, okay. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.